Welcome, everybody. So, uh, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:10. So it's, uh, um, it's amazing to see so many people here. Uh, and, um, welcome, everybody. I think that we will introduce ourselves since many of you have probably never seen us before. I know I've never seen any of you before. Uh, I'm Jason Hamilton, and I'm Chair of the Board of Trustees. Which really just in this context means that I'm kind of officiating the meeting, other than that it's in a special category for me. Uh, so I'll give you kind of the rules, uh, so that everybody gets a chance to speak in just a minute. But let's introduce the rest of the people up here on stage.
Good evening, I'm Peter Bartaglio, I'm the Vice Chair, and my job is to let Jason do his stuff.
Hi, I'm Kate Thompson. I am a board member with no title.
Joe Wilson, and I'm Secretary to the Board.
I'm Laura Gates-Lupton, and I'm happy to say I know most of you. And I'm the parent liaison to the board.
Tina Vesant-Hodges, Principal of New Roots, New York Charter School.
I'm Michael Mazza, and I'm the Staff Liaison to the Board.
Welcome, everybody. So, um, many of you have signed up for public comment, which is the only agenda I have on this meeting tonight. So, um, just to go over particularly, since there's so many people here, so comments will be limited to two minutes, uh, so that everybody gets a chance to speak. Uh, and because of the, because of the way the degrees of the rules work, I have to enforce that on absolutely everybody. Uh, so I'm not allowed to give somebody three minutes and somebody two minutes, because then I am interfering with your freedom of speech rights. And so that means that whatever the, whatever the time limit is, I have to enforce it. So that's, that's why when it gets to be two minutes, I'll say two minutes. And so I ask you to please, at that point, um, stop, stop your comments. And anything that you didn't get a chance to say, of course, you can submit in writing. Uh, and that we also, we can, and I ask you to do this anyway, submit your comments in writing to the trustees' email. And this way we can consider them, um, as much time as they need, as opposed to just spoken, spoken two minutes. Uh, this is a time for you all to let us hear your voices and your concerns, and it's a time for you to hear each other's voices and concerns. So we will not be commenting, uh, on, on anything that we're hearing tonight. One problem with us commenting is that any, any word that comes out of any person's mouth is just that person's opinion, that's not a statement of the board. The board can only make statements by resolutions and votes. And so it would be quite confusing, uh, if Kate says one thing and Peter says something else, and I say something else, and they're like, "Well, what's the board say?" Well, the board didn't say anything, because the board only speaks by resolutions and votes. So when we're not at this table, we're just community members. And we can chat and talk and, you know, whatever. But when we're at this table, we're bound by particular, uh, rules and requirements. So that's, it's not that we're not interested, and that we don't want to have a conversation, it's just that this form doesn't allow for such a thing. Uh, again, because of the way this is all, this is all set up. So our job is to listen, uh, and, uh, and the forum is for you to tell us and everybody to listen to each other. Okay? Now, uh, the board members may want to ask a question of clarification. Uh, and so there might be a time where somebody says, "Wait, I just asked one question about that." Uh, but again, we're not going to, to make any statements. Um, I know it's, it's also quite frustrating, like you have a two-minute limit. Uh, we have no limit. And I have been at meetings of other school boards where after I gave comments, members of the school board basically pontificated at me for long periods of time under which I couldn't respond anymore, because my two minutes were up. Uh, and so that's another reason why we're gonna make sure, because you might want to answer something that we say, in which case, "But your two minutes is up, and I can't give you more than two minutes, or I have to give everybody unlimited amounts of time." So again, so you see how this is going to, to work. Okay, so we have, uh, a list here, uh, to make sure that I don't massacre people's names. Tina will call out the names. Uh, Joe is the secretary, and so he is going to be taking careful notes. And I ask you please also submit your comments in writing. And I am going to keep time, and in fact, I am going to enforce a two, a two-minute limit. Okay? Uh, so, who next, Joe, here? Oh, Joe.
I don't do shorthand. So, we have a phone that's going to be recording your comments. I hope that we'll make sure that you are being heard on this phone, probably. Maybe by being near the phone, heard, to say what you say, because otherwise I would be doing much of this kind of, uh, we won't have a full record unless you're heard.
Could you speak louder?
All right, sorry. I just asked you folks to speak loudly. Because, for, because regardless of your phone and your volume, I don't do shorthand, so I'm not literally going to be transcribing what you say. Here's the, this is the sound piece for us. Thank you very much.
Jason, what board members are absent tonight? Tanya Saunders, this board member who is absent. Tanya Saunders. Senator Hangaway. And Katie Turell. Yeah, I see fingers pointing, which means that... Tanya Saunders is here. There was just a question about who was absent, Tanya, so... So, so absent is Senator Hangaway and Katie Turell. So, Tanya, all we've done is introduce ourselves and explain that there's a two, if there's two minutes, and that we're not going to comment as board members at this time. All right. Tina, who is the first speaker?
First speaker is President Tanya Hines.
My name is Krista Solian-Hines. My daughter graduated from New Roots in 2018. And I would like to speak on the topic of trust in the Department of Health and Medicine. Recently, we lost trust in the school's administration, as well as the school's board trustees. There have been numerous documented events that have contributed to this loss of trust. The following highlights a few events that my wife has experienced. This administration failed to properly plan for our daughter's January 2018 Regents exam. Fortunately for us, the administrator who was recently terminated stepped up to clean up the mess. This administration failed to fully support music students in time for the 2018 NISMO music auditions. NISMO auditions were important to our daughter's future, and we had donated money to the school to ensure that New Roots would participate. We believe that my IHOP conversation with a teacher who was suspiciously dismissed in 2018 were intercepted by this administration. While attending and addressing this board during a public meeting in the spring of 2018, we felt uncomfortable by the presence of police. The administration called the police to maintain peace, yet there was a threat of disturbance. While the assistant chief would create his personal equipment from the school, the parents were restricted entry to the building. And again, police were unnecessarily called to maintain peace. A few days later, the school sent us an email asking if we observed the teacher stealing the school equipment during the time of personal equipment retrieval. The retrieval was well documented, there was no bribery, and this accusation was made us, made us feel that the school also suspected us stealing it. In response to FOIL requests and queries to the New York State Division of Licensing Services, we learned that this board authorized, and this administration paid over $6,500 to hire an unlicensed private investigator who obtained questionable evidence that helps justify the termination of the teacher. This administration openly admitted to violating education law procedural requirements with respect to mandated reporting of rumored sexual misconduct in an educational setting.
Chris, that's two minutes.
Thank you.
Next is Stacy Crandall.
Sure, I know what you're asking, and I wish longer you'd heard the statement.
Thank you.
My name is Stacy Crandall, and I'm the mother of Dakota Crandall, who attended New Roots Charter School from 2014 to 2016. She had an amazing, thriving freshman year as a star student, and then struggling, traumatizing sophomore year as a student targeted and bullied by the administration. After that, she came home to be able to complete high school with only other option available to her. For the last three years, I have been witnessing continually collecting a library's work of documented principal lies, evidence of lies and history, of abuse, harassment, and discrimination against staff, students, and parents alike. And of the upper administrative members of New Roots Charter School, not only the moral and ethical laws, but actual educational and criminal laws, including attempts at extortion. In the last three years alone, this is just a small sampling of what I've seen. I've witnessed more than ten loved and valued staff members being harassed, effamed, extorted, and railroaded out of the school, against the wishes of the parents and students, and mostly undercover of lies and secrecy. More than 13 parents have sought me out here to learn and acquire more factual information on the school's darker history, and to share their own students and families' experiences of lies, discrimination, harassment, and trauma, even from California last year, they called me. Countless amazing kids from all corners and groups within this school have trusted me enough to seek me out to confide their poor stories to me and ask me to help speak for them, because they weren't being allowed to speak for themselves. Smart, eloquent, sensitive, creative, sweet children have been lied to, gaslighted, interrogated, discriminated against, bullied, and academically and emotionally harmed by the administration of this school. I've seen kids pitted against one another and used as pawns by the administration, extorted, victimized, falsely framed as victims, and framed and destroyed by false charges of sexual assault crimes on one another. And I saw other students who were real victims of sexual assaults by another New Roots student, and reported it to upper administrators who were ignored.
Two minutes.
I will leave each of you with the longer detailed, complete version of this or your disposal, and anyone else in a lightened copy of the crimes outlined and documented is available.
Tina, who's next, on the board? Barbara Lashley.
Hi, I'm Barbara Lashley, I'm a parent of two students, tentatively, continuously here at New Roots. And I haven't written comments, I would just say that everyone here in this room, it's good to see so many people here, have a vested interest in the survival of New Roots School, which is a vital need in this community in Ithaca, and especially to the students that attend. Just an observation of mine that I've been wondering about, and I moved around a lot when I was a kid, and I'm teaching myself, I've worked in a number of schools, I attended a number of schools, public schools, private schools, day schools, boarding schools. And one thing that I always noticed in schools was, teachers stay there for a very long time. Teachers tend to find a school where they enjoy the atmosphere, the student body that's always turning over, and they stick with that school. And they put in thirty, thirty-five, forty years, and then retire from that school. I don't see that happening at New Roots. The institution is mortally wounded by its high turnover, and I would have to place the responsibility for that turnover on the administration of the school. And I think it's time for the board to take action, to find out what can be done better by the administration to find some teachers that have reached tenure to build an institution that will have an institutional history and a real sense of community, a real sense of place and purpose. Because I'm not seeing it here at this school, and children don't see it here at this school. And, um, I think, according to the school's mission, that's sort of what it's supposed to be all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniella Hess.
My name is Daniella. Um, I'm a mom of a twelve-year-old, and he doesn't attend this school. I'm a community member that simply really cherishes the presence of New Roots in the community. I, um, was a former private school administrator myself, so when news came to me about all that was, all that's been running through this community here, it just, I felt it here. Um, I've been on all sides of this equation personally. I've been an administrator that had to make profoundly difficult choices when the budget was so excruciatingly tight, that sometimes staff had to be, had to be let go of. I've been a mom of a child in a private school. And I know many of you here, and I know many of the faculty over the years as a twenty-five-year resident in this town. So I just wanted to come and hear what was going on, see, is there anything that we can do as simply community members with you to see your school through this squeeze right now, and just to show support. And just that my heart really goes out to all the parents, to the board members, and to the teachers, the staff and faculty. Um, I know that you all share the same vision, and that's of an extraordinary school. That's a golden opportunity for your children. So, thank you. Thank you all, and thank you, Tina. Thank you for your years of dedication.
Jamie O'Neill.
Hello, everyone, I'm Amy O'Neill. I'm an area educator. I also go into a lot of different schools that works in the area to be a liaison, a consultant at times, and, um, someone who troubleshoots. Uh, the reason that I'm here, I also do not have a student in this school, but I have many children who have gone through different school systems. I can echo what Daniella said, in that I have been a parent, I have been an administrator of a charter school, and I've also been a high school teacher. I know that there are difficult decisions that have to be made. I also know that with the loss of a human, or multiple human beings, in a community, there is a tremendous amount of grief that is felt in that loss. And through that grief, there's opportunities to come together and to work together and make a plan that, that is cohesive, and a plan that has a bigger vision. I also know that in the face of grief, reactivity is often born. And retribution can often be a part of feeling that grief, wanting to push it into another person's hands, or another person's, um, I guess, blame. What I can say about my journey here over New Roots has been numerous conversations with administration and faculty and staff members through the years, staff members who have come through our programs at Yoga Farm, the Radiant Living School. And everyone here wants the same thing, which is an opportunity for students who may not have opportunities elsewhere. And when I look at this big community, I'm a graduate of ACS in Ithaca, LACS now, uh, there are not as many opportunities for alternative education as there are children who are seeking it.
My biggest... Kate, no, biggest, the biggest, biggest, the biggest! It's the biggest! Next, Michael Mazza.
Right, those who don't know me, I'm Michael. And I want to start first with gratitude. Gratitude to our volunteer board here, our amazing teacher staff that we have at this school, um, the staff that supports those amazing teachers, the leadership team, and of course, the students, some of you are here. Um, and I share that as a dad of students having amazing success here, um, but also as a member of the New Roots team, uh, I'm organizer of the Family Action Committee, and as you can see up here, the staff liaison to the board. When I was in middle school, I used to go from DeWitt Middle School down to Boynton Middle School to get dressed for lacrosse practice. And these guys used to bully me. And they would wait for me, and take my hat, and try to take stuff from me because they wanted to take money from me. And, uh, what resulted out of that is me no longer going to Boynton to change, and a friend and I, we went and changed over at the high school. So we kind of changed our behavior, which we didn't want to do, but we did based on bullying that was happening, uh, at the school. And I believe we're seeing some of that. Uh, the school has been bullied for a long time in this community due to adult politics, um, and other reasons that I don't understand. Um, but I feel like we're here today dealing with a symptom. And that symptom is a lack of resources, and decisions that are being made by the school, or decisions maybe that the school doesn't want to make, but has to make in light of the lack of resources. And I think one of the reasons that we have a lack of resources is because our friends down the street, ICSD, is withholding over $300,000 from our school. And I think that there's a real opportunity. I mean, this is awesome to see all of us here with an interest in the school. Uh, there's a lot of passion in this room, uh, for my daughter and all the other students that go here. And I would just like to see us all unite around that interest and come together to really... Make it happen.
Monica Bosworth.
Hi, I'm a, a mom of Sophia, sitting right behind me. And, um, I'd like to share one of my very favorite quotes with you. You may recognize it. "A leader is best when the people barely know that they exist. Not so good when they are obeyed and acclaimed; worst, when they are feared and despised. Fail to honor people, and they will fail to honor you. But of a good leader, when their work is done, their aim fulfilled, the people will say, 'We did this ourselves.'" That is a quote on leadership and community from Mao Zedong. And what I want to address is this concept of community. The community of New Roots is sitting here around, on the outskirts of this table. The students, the parents, the teachers and staff, we are the New Roots community. I would want the board and the administration to also be part of this community, but instead it feels to me like you stand apart from this community. I wonder to what extent the board actually knows these people that you have power over, and how often you come and see what happens and talk to the teachers and the staff, talk to the parents and the students about what is most important to them, who do they need to have here? There is a universal, in my experience, valuing of the administrator that was most recently eliminated, um, to an incredible degree. Um, and what I would like to say is that there's, there's no way for us to come and be part of your executive sessions where you make these decisions. And what I would like to see happen in the school is to have...
My initiation as a parent of a freshman at New Roots this year has been one of a long fear, confusion, deep concern, disappointment, and ultimately despair. While I communicated with action as much as possible to voice my concerns about the safety of the students, I continuously walked away feeling confused and disoriented. For months, I chalked this up to being a result of disorganization and overwhelm of a staff under-resourced and underfunded. Over to you, Peter, to share a bit of focus. In the action route of the elimination of the position of the academic dean, I reluctantly became aware of many systemic and pervasive issues plaguing the leadership of the school for the last decade. I learned of a long line of losses. Numerous staff members fired, dismissed, or forced to leave their positions due to intolerable and toxic conditions. With each cycle of losses, New Roots was weakened from within, dysfunctional loyalty rewarded, competency and integrity castigated. The people who left moved on, moved on to other opportunities and organizations and took with them their strengths, experience, competency, and integrity. Some of those people, having been so traumatized by their employment at New Roots, refused to be here tonight out of a sense of self-preservation and hopelessness that any real change is probable. For a handful of self-motivated students with actively involved parents, the actualization of the New Roots vision statement is somewhat attainable. But for many New Roots students, past and present, this vision statement raises a betrayal. Their lived experience is in stark contrast to who and how New Roots purports itself to be. These formative years in which their natural impulses thrust them into a young adulthood with passion, seeking out truth, justice, and individuation are met with disillusionment and the reality that the adults who were charged to guide or lead them got lost somewhere along the road. On a national level, our children are taking a, taking stock of their inheritance. A country in shambles, a dining planet, a government destroyed by apathy and corruption, all that we have refused to look at and take a stand against bubbling up from the, and under value of the collective unconscious and leaving us no choice but to see clearly the destructive consequences of inaction. There are undeniable parallels between what's going on up there and here. And it is time for you guys to take action. Listen to the parents, listen to the staff, listen to the students. It's not a stop! How many times do you guys know what this cycle will go through? Take a stand for my kids, for our kids, take a stand!
Okay, next is Diane Tisoli-Hines.
Hello, I'm Diane Tisoli-Hines. My daughter, Lito, is at the school, uh, for four years, and it was an amazing experience for her, and we feel like this is a wonderful school. However, I have felt that there's, I agree that there's been a lack of trust, and there have been some just peculiar things that have been going on that I think need to be addressed. Uh, there have been at least three people who have disappeared or been terminated under, in my mind, questionable conditions. There have been, through FOIL requests, we've learned that the administration has violated New York State education law with respect to the LEAP program. There have been multiple lawsuits against the school in the past and current present. And it just makes you wonder what is going on, what is being said, what is not being told. It's resulted in a lack of trust of the parents, um, to the school. Uh, and, and there are board meetings, and they're hard to time it when they are. We only started coming to board meetings recently, because we started being aware of them. But for the four years we were here with our daughter, we had no idea when the board meetings were, so we had no way to become a part of the school. So these are some of the things that have caused me and my husband to lose trust in the school, and we would really like to know what can you do to help everybody gain our trust in you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is William Martin.
Good afternoon. Ladies, I am the vice president. I want to put these to you right now. I just emailed you, and for this, I should have gotten this before, but this is what happened. And we have a lot to say. With a lot to say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna break this down to its major points, but we have sent it to the board, we have sent it to our staff, and we're willing to do what we want. We understand, and you being the majority of members of Narcissa, we understand the decision to eliminate the academic dean position was purely budgetary, and that the intention was to have increased funds as a result for our teacher salaries so that our school can retain and attract high-quality teachers. While we appreciate these efforts, we need to underscore that removing the academic dean position does more harm than good. We produce the undeniably hard, difficult work that is already done by the board, but we believe that the removal of a certain person in the position of assistant principal of an academic dean has placed our school at serious risk in multiple ways and jeopardizes our ability as educators to successfully achieve the school's mission. These concerns were discussed at length with Tina Vesant-Hodges in a series of meetings last week, and her responses are still forthcoming. We believe the elimination of the position of assistant principal and academic dean without a dedicated ministerial to oversee the operation of the entire academic environment jeopardizes our ability to provide the best and safest learning environment for our students. We are a key transitional element in our school. We have lost several key staff. We're implementing untested change to our bell schedule. We're expanding college-level courses, which an administrator was dedicated to. Most importantly, we are transferring from one successful school year to one who's had significant challenges within our school community as a whole. We had to screen student behavioral challenges that are breaking them. As a witness, this letter is available. How is this letter available to the parents?
Wait now, I will make it available. I will give them, if you want to contact me, W. Martin, at newrootschool dot org.
Hey Lynn, I don't think I can say your full last name.
Oh, me?
Yes.
I'm Zephanat?
Yeah, there you go. I will keep this very short and sweet. I've been a substitute teacher, tutor, one-on-one at New Roots for eight years. And I have absolutely loved being here. This felt like home. Past two years, I've been noticing a lot of changes that have really bothered me, wondering, is this really where I belong? I received an unsolicited job offer from Cornell. And worked there, you know, I've been working there this summer. And I decided after you let Chris go, and I don't know all the circumstances. I just don't agree with how it was done. I've decided that I can no longer be part of the school. And I cried. But Cornell wants me to stay, and I'm going to stay at Cornell. So that's really all I have to say. I think that what was done was done very... What's the word? Inconsiderately. There was no heart in it. No, the mission statement to me is lip service. When we can do something like this to yet another person that has worked here and dedicated themselves to making this the school that it used to be. Is that my time off?
I don't know what that is.
Oh, it must be. It's okay.
Here is Alisa.
One second, Karen. Okay.
I actually have two statements. I've written my own, which I can submit in writing if we don't have enough time. And Kali Iman also sent a statement, which I would like to read. She kind of learned my name. And then I will speak to what you were talking about to Lynn. I would like to add to that. So this is from Kali. I almost didn't write this because I can't imagine Chris wanting to return to a school to dismiss her in such a way. I almost didn't write this because I didn't think it would change anything. But I have to write this because as educators, we have to walk the walk. We hang so many inspirational posters up on our walls telling these children to stand up for things that matter. We tell them they can and should be agents of change. So who would I be if I sat down on this day that someone needs to stand up? Author Toni Morrison once wrote, "Love is or it ain't." Thin love ain't love at all. That feels a fitting quote for this day. Chris Haines Sharp is loved at New Roots by the teachers, by the staff, by the students, and by their families. A person who is loved should not find out in an email that they no longer have a job or an income to count on, certainly not by a school that claims a responsibility to social justice in its mission and vision. That is some thin love right there. In her role as my supervisor, I have gone to Chris on numerous occasions with various crises that would have otherwise derailed my teaching. And she was quick to diffuse them every single time. She has pushed me to be critical of myself as a teacher and also has greatly supported my professional growth, my innovation, and my own leadership development. She is unmatched by any supervisor I have ever had, and I have taught in three other schools for a number of years.
That's two minutes.
Senator Jack?
There's five people in this room who can make any difference at all about any of this. That's, I don't know, that's good news or bad news. The rest of us can't do anything. Teenage, we can't do anything. You know, if this was a real school board, you would have been elected up. But we don't have that authority. If you were a real school board, we wouldn't be here on an annual basis having the same conversation again and again and again and again and again and again. Because you're not doing your job. Now, you three folks, I don't know you. Mr. Wilson, I had some hopes for you. You came out about the same time as I left, and I thought that you could provide Tina with the kind of support she deserved. But apparently that hasn't happened. You two, Peter and Jason, you've been absolutely negligent. You abandoned this one. You abandoned all these people, this school, these kids. You abandoned us all. You know, you took this job. There's the only people in this room who can do anything about this with the people you're sending, there, and there, and there. You're occupying a seat. If you're not going to do your job, get out of the seat and let one of these people. We have amazing people in this community. I mean, Jason, you've been here for seven years. I mean, it's too long. It's time to go. Peter, you've never done shit. It's time to go. It's so offensive to me that you take these seats. Ms. Thompson, I don't know you. Mr. Wilson, I don't know you. But you've been here long enough to make a difference in this. I don't know if you're a psychologist, and I don't have one with me anymore, but I'm not sure if there are problems. You know, it looks like a difficult, complex problem. But it's been the same problem that we've faced ever since this school opened. And there's a simple solution. Now, this doesn't solve it. But you know, what's required now? The toxins have built up in the body of the school so much that it's going to poison us, and we need surgery. We need you cut out, and we need people to take your place who will do their job.
Never should have let him go to begin with.
And this isn't enough tonight. This isn't even listening here. This isn't even listening. You need to listen to these people. You need to meet with them regularly. You need to fucking, you need to sign that resignation or you need to do your job. And I'll say, I'll do it. This isn't, this isn't enough.
You call yourself an educator? Listen to him. Listen to him. No. No, I'm sorry. You don't use that language in tone. I'm sorry, excuse me. Five people turned over as a result. That man has been fighting this fight for a decade. You fight this fight for another three, four years. And you aren't ready to lose your way.
I don't have my judge's gavel, but thank you very much. I understand that some emotions are running quite high. If you wish to have a continuing conversation to communicate with the last board or anybody outside. For those of you who don't know, some of us have a long history with particular people who might be speaking to us tonight, which adds to the level of emotional intensity. So part of what's going on here is not just what's going on here. It's built-up frustration for the long...
That's for sure. That's for sure.
Yep, same thing over and over.
And like I say, it's definitely not appropriate for us to comment because we have unlimited time, and you only have two minutes. So we'll...
I'm Jill Bean Sharp. I'm Chris Haines Sharp's wife. I was there when she got the email. But before I say anything about that, I have to finish the statement that was started, that Kali wrote. Chris makes me feel truly seen by an administrator in a way that I have never felt. She brings humanity into a place. On a personal level, I have told many, many students that they can count on Chris in the absence of all other com. And now that she's not going to be there, I've been... And now she's not going to be there. I've told many, many members to trust Chris's words. And now she's not going to be there. Families, students, I apologize. We are here, and I hope we can figure this out tonight. Eliminating Chris's position is a massive mistake. She is the single person in the New Roots community who has the holistic understanding of the day-to-day everything that is New Roots. As one of the faculty, she is cited as leading for financial reasons. I would clear a stage where there is no way out of this day, even with substantial praise. If Chris has the strength, likes to make that happen, please make this right and restore her sense of community integrity. I was there when she got an email from Tina Tuesday evening, the 16th of July. An email after 10 years working for this school won't even get to call her or say anything to her. I don't know how you sleep at night. I really don't, Tina. You owe her a public apology. After all she's done for this school. And I know what a great school is. I've been at every graduation since the school started. And I've heard the success stories. And I want to say for Chris, thank you to all of you, students, staff, and parents who've reached out to her in the last few weeks. It's been amazing for her to hear your stories and to have her support. And she thanks you in all of her heart. I want to see this school survive. But it's not going to, you and I.
Sophia.
Hi, my name's Sophia. I'm a student at New Roots. We're two years. Sorry?
It's okay. It's okay.
You can cover off, please. I don't know.
I'm resetting the time. So you have...
Thank you. New Roots is a really unique, welcoming community that provides more than you'd find in a city that encourages students to grow through sustainability and social justice. I was home school until my eighth grade, and I came to New Roots. And it has always felt like our home from the moment I walked in the door. There wasn't a day in my first year here that I didn't want to be at school. There's been a lot of things that I've heard my first year here and witnessed my first and second year that have been really scared me, including a lot of safety issues, including, I've heard my friends and other students and things they've heard about. Safety issues that haven't been addressed by people that they shouldn't be addressed by. The concerns that I've had and others have that I've heard about have been taken, have been addressed by the former academic dean and teachers and only dealt with in sufficient ways by those people. This community right now doesn't feel like it used to be. I'm really scared for my education. I'm impressed that it's been safe camp right now. And I've been looking at other options really seriously now. And I'm 100% going to go to a different school. There's not a change in leadership here. Because I don't trust to be educated. Yeah, I just don't trust my education as a candidate at all. There's also, I have not witnessed any, almost any input from students. They have their teachers when it comes to making decisions for the board and superintendent make, that affect the students and teachers more than anyone else in the community at all. No input, I haven't seen any input going to those students. It doesn't feel like a community. How is the community effort important that you afford? And what are you going to do to implement it into this community? Make it more like a community? That's all I have. Thank you.
Robin Parker. I don't have any written comments here, but one of my major concerns, my son is a student class year. And I want to know what is going to be done about the academic dean's position. Because my son, though, needs academic guidance. He needs academic pushing, poking, clogging, dredging, pulling at high speeds, as I think many other students do. I have been told by a couple of people that, Tina, I think we're trying to bring those duties onto yourself. A school principal is already a full-time FDA. My son is a full-time job for somebody. But my feeling is that the principal position and the academic council position cannot be held by the same person. It's just too much. And I can see the education concern that it will affect their ability to do the job as well as our students' outcome. Also, my son does love this school. Yeah, so I'm in full support of the school. I'd want to see it successful because I need my son to be here, okay? And so we need you guys to listen to us. I think there's a very clear sentiment being expressed here. And you guys actually are supposed to work for us. Okay? So when this many people come to you and say to you, there is a problem, and we are making the problem very, very clear, it's your guys' job to come up with a solution. So please, do the job that you're assigned up for. I don't know any of you at all, okay? I've been hearing a lot of frustration, a lot of anger. It's not my personal, I don't carry this. But I am very aware of anything that impacts my son. I'm a mom there, okay? So please, take the cue from what everybody's telling you and do something, find a solution.
Robin Trapper Verbal.
I'm going to cast a submitted...
Jada Chase.
Hi, I'm Jada. I have a daughter who is a senior in the class. And we love this school. It was, and is, like, the only educational option for my girl. There is nothing else that would work, not even homeschooling at all. Anyway, we love this school and have a really good experience that has progressively, from her freshman year to now, become more and more frustrating and uncertain and anger at her. And she, she does not feel emotionally safe at the school. She doesn't trust leadership. And she's asking me hard questions like, "Mom, why are you sending me to the school?" And all this, I'll use her words, bullshit is going down. And I'm just saying, it's the only option we have right now, honey. You got to stick it out one more year. You're doing great in school, you're a smart girl. You're going to do really well in this world, you know? When you graduate. But I fear, as a mom, so much for the stability of this school. So much has happened that has caused me to feel like the firm foundation that we were seeking and felt like we had four, three years ago is really, really shaking hard. And I just really implore... And I just really implore you, please, you have a lot of kids, wonderful, bright kids, that you should be taking care of and not causing to feel what my daughter is feeling, which is that she can't trust the school, she can't trust the administration, things are really shaky. She doesn't know what to expect, she doesn't know what's gonna happen next. I don't think any kid should have to feel that way. And the second part is, I don't know, is it two minutes? Okay, I can't make that question.
Michael Yurwani.
First week in here, I'm a student here. Before I came here, I scored with a top scorer. It was crazy. When you came here, it was the first time in years. This is awesome. I think that's great. And that means a lot. Big organizations, schools, and things, every year, things happen. Hard decisions have to be made. I know that a lot of faculty are busy. I know that they weren't part of this, best of all. Experiences are experiences. I don't know everything, but I do know that this is a good place. But a lot of students don't feel that way. One thing I do know is that you can walk through this door anytime. You've got a question. You have a question and concern? Walk through that door any day, anytime. I guarantee you, you'll get what's up. Because that's what I got. It's not just that these meetings, that we bring all this up and bring this storm on. We need to figure out how to come together. Piece by piece, be a light, and make it work. Because this is a good place. And we need to figure out how to build it up and not tear it down. Basically what I got. Walk through the doors and question, you've got a question. Don't wait until something happens. Period. Thank you.
Chris B. French. I'll also talk from here. Clearly, emotions are running very high within this school tonight. And it seems like we're beginning to treat this as though we're all on opposite sides from each other, rather than, perhaps we could, as Michael suggested, that we can continue to address concerns over time. I've never been denied a meeting once with any faculty here. And everybody has, Tina, Chris, Jekin, anybody that I've ever needed to address anything with has always been right there for us. Any of the faculty, all the teachers. And I understand it's so heated, it's so emotional because this is our community, right? But there's also, we're dealing with a lot right now in society. My children, they've been here for the last eight years, and we would be finishing our senior year, but I'm not going to forcibly have my children vaccinated so that they can go to a last-year public school. That's a really big consent issue, isn't it? So in some ways, it almost seems like, rather than fighting it out, maybe we could have a roundtable discussion and talk about. And perhaps we could even build some type of unity movement for charter schools that are created for the purpose of, like, making something that's not militaristic like so many public schools are, which really has made such a difference in all four of my children's lives. And fortunately, my nephew's gonna be able to start coming here, even though my children are, my nephew's coming in with me, and he's gonna be coming here. So we're still gonna be involved in the school. We're still gonna be the support of the school. And I would like to see the school survive because without New Roots, I don't know where my kids would have been all this time. And because my children can't continue to come home, the one thing that I'm thinking is that maybe we can roundtable everything. Maybe we can start talking about things more as a community. And maybe the schools can begin to back some of the parents that don't want to have their children forcibly injected. I apologize. Maybe we can get support gathered together. Maybe we can work together. And I'm sorry about all the stuff that's happened. And maybe we can just work it out. Because I don't know what we'd do without new students. All right, that's the end of this.
Is there anybody who came late who would like to add their name to the list? You can come up.
Hi.
Wait, you have to add your name to the list, and then you can come up. There you go. That is two minutes.
Hello, I'm a student, and I went home from the school. So I'm pretty vested. I graduated last year, and I'm in this school for a year. And anytime I can accept anything, I back you guys up. Very, very much so. To the point of, I actually know the names of most of the people on Get Busy School Board, having all the meetings in support of New Roots. I don't know any of you, which is kind of weird, right? I mean, like, I know every single person in this area, even though I didn't have some of you as teachers. But I know only you. And most of the kids here don't know any of you. So I think that needs to change. And also, in terms of other things I have to do with tonight, because I think we're all here to talk about Chris and everything that happened. It was kind of weird. You guys don't know what I've been through in high school or how she helped me as to do with disabilities in the learning sense. Navigate that to Anna DePauw. I don't know who's gonna do that now. I mean, Matt's gone, Chris is gone. And I've seen the letters that have been answering those questions, but they don't answer those questions. I know that Chris worked with Carrie to get my junior year finished, even though I had a traumatic breakthrough that was later. I know that Chris worked with someone who's not here at home to get my junior year finished, even though he didn't work at the school at the time. So if she was willing to work with everybody in terms to get one student finished, I know if she worked with other people to get everybody's career finished here. And, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I know numbers matter. I'm not gonna like sit here and pretend that we should, like, only do the personal stuff because I see a bunch of different large parents. We have to separate profession from person, but your graduation rate would come down. And I would have finished in five years if not for Chris Hainsharp. My photo would not be there.
Is there anybody else who would like to add their name to the list tonight? Should we add my name to Chris?
So someone who worked at the school, got my first teaching assignment to Tina. I really want to underscore that if the decision was in fact to eliminate the academic dean position, if it was in fact budgetary, that, and that idea was to retain teacher salaries, I really want to emphasize that it will not, that's, from my view, that's an indicator in that the impact on teachers and the impact on students are not worth whatever kind of monetary increase we would get. And I, as a teacher here, I'm just, I'm very concerned about abrupt changes in the midst of all of these other changes. And I really just am asking new board members to really take that into heart of what the effect is for our school and what could be remedied for the beginning of the school year.
Thank you.
Chris. I'm Chris Ravati. I'm a special ed teacher here. I just want to say that, first of all, thank you to the board. I think you're charged with a very difficult task. And I know it was a hard decision to even put yourself on this map of how to fund a school this year. As a charter school, we go through this a lot. And that's a constant struggle that you guys are always facing. So I want to hold that, first of all, with due respect. But I was also drawn to New Roots because of, I feel like a commitment to deep dialoguing process. And I felt, for the first time all year, that that process was betrayed. Those of you who know me on staffers' parents know that I'm also a mediator. And I'm a mediator with a group called Volform Mediation. And our slogan is "Better Process, Better outcome." And I think this was a bad process, that it happened the way it happened. I think we could do better. Now, I'm not saying that to slander. I'm saying that we could do better. You know, we have meritist teachers who were of stature, who were walking out, who were not consulted. I feel like we could have done better by asking Audrey what she thought of this, by asking the Colleen Iman before this decision was made, what she thought of. By asking the gentleman Michael, the history teacher's stuff, who's a former, I can't think of his last name. I feel like we could have done better, and we should strive ourselves to do better if we have to have an add-on emeritus board member who's a former teacher of staff so that emergency situations like this can be handled. I have never worked on a staff that was flabbergasted and upset over getting a raise. Like, I heard that we're getting a raise. And we were universally bummed that it was on Tina's back. And I love it here. I think this school is amazing. I think there are miracles here every day. I'm proud to be a part of the team. And Chris was a large part of what made me proud to be here. Thanks for the extra 15 seconds. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right. So that was the only agenda item I'll have made tonight. So I will move to your first name. Seconded by Bill. Any discussion, questions from members of the board? All those in favor of adjourned? Please adjourn. And we are officially adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.